Call this regular meeting of the county commission, Robbs County, April twenty first. I like to order, asked everybody to get any ball caps on, the police take them off. And everybody's cell phones, pull it out, look, see if you can use. That gentleman right there will take them off. He sure will. Okay, commissioners, you roll call if you will. Got twenty present, four absent, I'm fair, we do have a call. At this time, I'm gonna ask my pastor from Adams, Ed Bumgardner. He pulled double duty yesterday, we had a sunrise service and the preaching church, will you come up please and do our invocation followed by the pleas to lead? Thank you for coming.
Pray with me. Heavenly fathers, we come before you this day, the day after Easter when we have celebrated that the light of the world has shined into the darkness. Father, may we remember that we are Easter people, that we live on this side of the resurrection. Which means we have the opportunity to witness to the light. To lit witness to that in a world that is so dark, that is in desperate need of that light. Father, may the decisions we make here be testimony to that light. May we make decisions out of the wisdom that you have given us. That will be good for all people. And so fathers, we come this day, we just ask that you would bless this meeting, bless those that have volunteered to serve. What better place than in the volunteer state to be and to volunteer to serve? And so father, we ask that you would be with them, that you would guide them as they make their decisions. We give thanks for the liberties we have to be in this great nation. That allows us to to come together this way. And so father, we just ask that you would bless this country and this state. Be with our first responders and be with our military as well, be with all leaders that are guiding our country. And so father, we just give you praise and glory this day, for us in the precious and the holy name of Jesus the Messiah that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, brother Ed. Tell people, you can't say amen, you gotta say out. Hey, thank you for that, that's special to me. Okay, commissioners, minutes from the previous meeting is in your package. I'll take a motion from Commissioner Roberts, he's second, by Commissioner Capps. Buddy, if you ain't got any questions, if all in favor of filing them, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Minutes are filed. Hey, my communications, first thing I want to say, congratulations to Coach Summers. Way to go, man, you're going to enjoy working them kids.
Will.
Yeah, congratulations to you. Tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at the courthouse, Casa will be putting out their pinwheels, if you'd like to come. Okay, May the first is day of prayer. I think we're gonna have something at the courthouse at seven thirty in the morning. Okay, May the third is corn, pancakes, breakfast, it's gonna be, that's on Saturday, it's gonna be at the fairgrounds this year. I got May the fourteenth is Things Academy, my right coach. At six o'clock, gonna be at the middle school.
Yep, I mean, I'm sorry, I, that's where it'll be at, we hold our graduations. Yep.
Middle school, okay, at the auditorium. I think I've got everything, but I talked to Steve, Commissioner Steve Haley today. He started his treatments today and he said he probably wouldn't fill up to it, but he is with us in spirit. And he, he's, what, on our website, what we've got, Madam Clerk? He is listening on that, so I, hey, he said, whatever you do, gang, keep praying for him.
Amen.
Hope he gets back on the track and be here. Okay, that's all, I've got communication, but public comments from the crowd about anything that's on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll go back to our reports then. Our now, the highway report, any questions or comments? Trustee report, any questions or comments? If you'll notice, we got, you know, reports from the trustee. I talked to Ms. Kendrick yesterday, or no, Friday, Thursday, get back to Florida. We got four hundred and twenty-three eight on our taxes, which it'd be two years for they'll probably carry it to Chancery, give people time to pay. But that sounds like a lot, but we're not talking about maybe a penny on property tax, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, that's what we're talking about. Okay, veteran services report, any questions or comments? Animal control, any questions or comments? Solid waste, any questions or comments? EMA report, any questions or comments? EMS report, any questions or comments? Their meeting is tomorrow, that right, Stubblefield, at five o'clock?
I'm sorry.
No, it's next Monday, isn't it?
Right.
EMS is next Monday.
Next Monday, at five o'clock, April twenty eighth. Okay, if you want to go to that meeting, and while we're on EMS, our prayers with Brent about the passing of his dad. Okay, fire, report, any questions or comments? Bubba, when's your next meeting?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night at what time?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock? Conference room.
Third floor.
Okay, third floor. File and fines report, any questions or comments? Hearing none? If you're for filing reports, say aye. I need a motion, give me a motion, Roberts, Commissioner Roberts, give me a second.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess. Commissioner Roman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want, I want to file them reports? Don't move, they are filed. At this time, we don't have any elections or appointments, we'll go to our public hearing, I'm zoning. I asked my zoning bunch to come forward. This is when the citizens of Robbs County can be a part of the public hearing. We're gonna read the zoning, have you got anybody likes to talk?
No, sir.
Nobody signed up? Well, I'm gonna ask you anyway, just to give you a fair plug. Go ahead, Hunter.
Resolution number zero four two one two five zero two two, Melvin Northlake Junior request to rezone one point eight seven acres of the nineteen point one two surveyed acres from AG two to RP eighty, located at forty-nine thirty-eight Starks Road, tax map zero five zero, part of parcel one two one, point zero zero, first voting district. Planning Commission recommended by vote of five to zero.
Did you want to hear like, you'll have resolution? Seeing none, go ahead, Hunter.
Resolution number zero four two one two five zero two three, R three properties request to rezone two acres of the fourteen point four zero seven surveyed acres from AG two to RP eighty, located at twenty-seven forty-six Kenny's Road, tax map zero five four, part of parcel zero eight eight point zero zero, seventh voting district, planning commission recommended by vote of five to zero.
Do you want to hear, speak on that resolution? Okay, seeing none, Hunter?
Resolution number zero four two one two five zero two four, Rashami Savaria request to rezone four point nine seven acres, which is the Tennessee portion of the six point zero four surveyed acres from AG two to C one, located at sixty-two forty-seven Lake Springs Road, tax map zero one two, part of parcel zero four six point zero zero, third voting district, planning commission recommended by vote of five to zero.
Anyone here to speak on that resolution? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the county commission. Start with the Yes, somebody will speak?
Me. Do you want
Hey, Commissioner Ed, Hebert?
Question for Josh Lyons, who was part of the third one.
You got a question for them?
Yeah. Do you want to wait till we get to that one, or you want to do it now?
Is that the last one or what?
Yes, last one.
Okay, wait till we get to that, and what I'll do is I'll open the public hearing and make it legal, okay? Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, just, unless there's fifty of them out there. Okay, we'll do A one, Melvin Northlake, voting district one, going from AG two to RP eighty, I need a motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Capps, he's second. Second by Commissioner Roberts. Any questions for Hunter? Question being called, if you're for that resolution, vote aye, if you're against it, vote no. I got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes. Okay, we'll move to Adam two, R three properties, voting district seven. Any questions for Hunter?
Question.
Question being called, I need a motion?
I'm here.
Okay, good, head Hebert, a motion, I need a second by Commissioner Rommel. And my follow-up question to me called, if you're for that resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well, I'm here for.
Preating that pays the big bucks, eh? Got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes. Okay, I'm gonna do something probably a little bit different, Hunter, go ahead.
I'm done.
Okay.
I've already read mine.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to read again, then I'm gonna open to the public.
Resolution number zero four two one two five zero two four, Rashami Saravaria request to rezone four point nine seven acres, which is the Tennessee portion of the six point oh four surveyed acres, AG two to C one, located at sixty-two forty-seven Lake Springs Road, tax map zero one two, part of parcel zero four six point zero zero, third voting district, planning commission recommended by vote of five to zero.
Okay, I'm gonna open it back up, the words.
You want to make Josh?
Head Hebert can ask questions, somebody in the crowd.
Josh, you want to make Josh part of the commission?
Yeah, it's open back up, you'd like to come up and speak?
He's the representative.
Okay, so they're saying they want to create this commercial lot for employees of the industrial park, which I'm familiar where it is.
Right.
What type of services are we talking about, how big?
It's a commercial service, and when we had to submit for the water available study, we kind of had to shoot high because it's kind of unknown at this point, but it was to serve that area in a commercial aspect, just for those that are on Bonn Parkway within the industrial park. And so the, the water state came back and said, basically, if you want to do that kind of commercial, well, you're gonna have to improve the line to a six inch, right now, there's a three inch line out there on Lake Springs Road. So we would have to update that, and there's a map that was included, which you probably have. And, you know, if they have any fire suppression or fire hydrant requirements, that would have to be updated as well. So it's still kind of an open ended of what exactly it's going to be. But we had to give Portland Utility something on the high end, just to get the study through, and that's what we did.
And they're gonna be the ones who are upgrading everything for that.
The owner would be required to put all that in, yes, to whatever standard it is that he puts in. Right now, there's, there's, there's a house and a single domestic service on that line right now for that property.
Mr. Roberts?
So do we, are you saying we don't know what's going there?
Just something commercial.
It's just commercial aspect, yeah, it's gonna be something that will help and support the, the workers in that area that they could use maybe for lunch or just some kind of
Going to lean to, or are we building, you said something for lunch, I mean, are we building, what are we, just kind of?
This is just the first hurdle to get to the commercial aspect, of course, we'll have to bring the site plan to planning commission and go through that site plan process to make sure it's an allowable use under that C one zoning request.
But it is gonna be brick and mortar buildings and everything like that, it's not gonna be any food trucks or anything like that for these, these people.
Yeah, quite a bit, that's, that's about the best we know, so for right now, yes.
I've got a question, said the Tennessee side of the property, does this property split the state line?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. All right, anybody else got a question? Okay, I got a question by Commissioner Hogan.
Do we need to make an amendment to this motion to include what Josh is saying here?
No, he's, all we're doing is saying that they can move forward, but he's going to have to carry a site plan back.
Saying that, but
And, and our engineer will look at it, and in our zoning laws, I don't think it's gonna let nobody put up a tent and start selling food out of it. He's got to meet the, everything that we've got going.
I just want to make it all transparent.
Well, it is transparent.
Changes going on here. I'm fine with what's going on.
All right, hey, since we let this man speak, has anybody got rebuttal against this zone? If not, I'm gonna close it from the public and come back to county commission.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, thank y'all, commissioners.
Need a motion.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Stroud, got a second by Commissioner I'm gonna say by Bubba Dars since that's the way her court's gonna file it. All right, any questions?
Question.
Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. Nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes. Thank y'all. Okay, we'll move down to resolutions, and chair recognizes Commissioner Bobby Capps from the budget committee.
A lot of pressure. Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor. Our guest, both commissioners. I'd like to present resolution zero four two, one two five zero two five. I can get a second, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, I need a second by Commissioner Woodard.
Uh, our EMS department was able to buy ambulance that was slated for another county, Lawrence County, I think. And they weren't able to pay for it, just to be honest, so we got it at a reduced rate. It's cheaper than what we had, it's money that we had allocated, gave us quite a bit left, so we've, we've got an EMA, need to new pickup truck they have for the last two years. So part of that money's gonna be allocated to them to buy a truck. Forty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. And we thought, EMS thought it'd be best, and I think we are, this truck's been running its last leg for a while, so that's what we're doing.
Any question for Commissioner Capps? Question being called, for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. I got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes, Mr. Capps?
All right, this is resolution zero four two, one two five, zero two six.
Okay, I got a motion by Capps and a second by Commissioner Head Hebert.
This is an amendment for fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars to buy computers, upgrade computers for the county parks, and it's money that she already had, that's what it's slated for, it's money they put back for that purpose.
Any questions for Mr. Capps?
Question.
Y'all sure there's no questions?
Question.
Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no.
They don't want to make any.
I got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes, Commissioner Capps?
All right, this is resolution zero four two, one two five, zero two seven. This is a resolution for seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And it's an annual fee to service the system for the juvenile court system. After this year, this will be paid out, circuit courts, but this year, it's, it's paid out of money from the juvenile court.
Yep, these courts have got fees that this money goes in to pay upgraded equipment. Okay, the motion by Capps and second by Ed Hebert, question? Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes. Against it, vote no. Got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes, Mr. Capps?
All right, this is resolutions zero four two, five, zero two eight. This is a resolution amendment to school budget. The total of, one of them is for seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars. They're transferring money for, I want to finish some construction at the innovation academy. I think is what, is what we were told, and part of it's HBAC and some other things they had to finish. And then thirty thousand, five twenty-five, and that, that's coming from tuition for an aftercare contribution, like gifts for thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the way they're spending and allocated is laid out over two pages.
Did send you the package, Commissioner? Okay, I got a second by Commissioner Martin, chairman of, you chairman of the committee? Chairman of the education case committee. Any questions for Mr. Capps?
Question.
Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. Got eighteen four, one against?
Hey, mine's wrong, I don't
Well, I was gonna ask you, do you want to vote? You can do it, Madam Clerk, if you can change it, let the record show.
Yeah.
Commissioner Roberts pushed the wrong button. And then he's voting yes. Got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes. Okay, Commissioner Capps?
All right, resolution zero four two, one two five, zero two nine. This is amendment for the highway department, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that we got from the state aid program that was money that was coming, we didn't want to spend it till it was spent. From that, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand of it is being spent on infrastructure for a section of Kenny's Road, at least twenty thousand dollars go into the fund.
Okay, I've got a second by Commissioner Roberts, I'm commenting that this will pave part of Kenny's Road. Ten miles. Four five, okay. I was fixing to say, because if it's a county road, it's a hundred thousand dollars a mile, so I knew the state, they got a lot more to this, so five point five, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, wow. Any questions for Commissioner Capps? Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. I got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes, Mr. Capps?
All right, resolution zero four two, one two five, zero three zero. Uh, this is eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars, it's an outlet system for computers that Chancery Court, and that money they have put back, it's what's funded.
Okay, I got a second by Rommel. Bobby, this is where in case they want to do some virtual court cases too? That has explained to me.
Well, this, I think they're upgrading computers, and one last month is when they were doing the virtual, was when we got the system where they could do the virtual court cases.
Any questions for Bobby Capps? Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. Got nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes. Mr. Capps?
All right, resolution zero four two, one two five, zero three one. This is a resolution for the state is helping fund some training for our EMS. And we're getting a total of fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, and that's what they're spending on training.
I guess
Dollar surplus from the state, and that social security, state retirement, Medicare tag, so that's just letting it out.
Okay, I got a second, Commissioner Roberts, anybody got another question for Capps?
I got a question to ask, are they gonna pay them separate on it, or they gonna put it on?
That would be a question for payroll, I don't have that answer.
And that might get taxed, or don't?
Well, it, it, this, this pays a social security tax, state retirement, they don't pay the income tax.
They do.
But they're getting that money extra.
Understand, but
Right, I would think it would.
Sometimes we get all separate, that's why we're not asking, makes a difference on the pay, how much
Sure, it means you don't have, it means the taxes don't come out of it.
Either way, all right, sir.
Anyone else?
Question.
Question being called, if you're for this resolution, vote yes, against it, vote no. Nineteen four, zero against, that resolution passes, Mr. Capps?
All right, this is resolution four, zero four two, one two five, zero three two. This is a resolution moving money of a total of one million, seventeen thousand and nine dollars to fund replacing eight HBAC units. And, and we're also covering a potential tariff, I'm not telling you it's gonna be one, it could be one, we covered that in there too, it could be up to thirty thousand dollars for tariffs, if it's not, then it might go back into general under, that not, or, or, or building fund one, but that's covered in case that happens, now what this does not cover, I'll say this, this had to be done. These units are past their life and have been for a while, we've been living on borrowed time, Joel has been hitting reset and praying a lot, and it's not gonna work. What's gonna happen is one, if we don't do this, one of these are gonna go out, and then we're gonna be renting a unit to keep the building up and running, and that's gonna cost a lot more. Just so you know, if we get this one done, there's some more we're getting looked at, so there's some others that are at the end of life or passed into life, so this is coming and it needs to be done.
Now, this is bid, it's come from train. And I could say with thirty thousand dollars, it's just a case of tariffs, maybe the price is not quite what it ought to be. I got a second by Commissioner Head Hebert, go ahead, Doug.
Hey, Mr. Bobby, I don't remember from the meeting, the warranty, what's the warranty on these?
Five years.
Five years?
Yeah.
And how long, I mean, how long alive are these expected to be, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Referring standards of these units is, but with being well maintained, are fifteen, eighteen years. Your staff has done a great job, all the ones you have right now, they've lasted over twenty. That's definitely fun.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Dars?
It's been that kind of money, we taking more than just one, one beer, it's just a one beer deal.
No, we went, we went through train.
I mean, sir, no, send, send anybody out there else, I ain't got nothing against train, I just want
There's two things, you don't have time to wait, because every one of these is a custom unit.
Understand, that's a lot of money not to get that extra.
I want to say we went to sole sources, how we did this?
We, yeah, and plus, we used their engineering, everything.
I don't want to not get that spread, I'm
Yes, we can make them a member of the court.
I'm motioning for making them a member.
I got a motion to make train man Randy, member of the court, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose that? Hold up, Randy.
Thank you, great question, by the way, this, we've used the Omni purchasing cooperative. This is approved by the state of Tennessee to be able to go direct with the manufacturer for cities, counties, and schools. So all the bid requirements required for the state of Tennessee are satisfied with Omni.
That's answered to the question, I just wanted to make sure I was answered for.
It's a good question.
Certainly, sir.
Thank you, now, we, we've got a lot of confidence in the bid we've gotten, and what we've done with the train, they've been very good partners for us, but I understand the question, I mean, I ask you too. But illegally, if it's kind of, if you don't have that, then you can't do it.
Fact it came back to it, cheaper than what we thought it would be, Commissioner Roberts?
We are taking all the from, none of these old units, they're saving it for us, we're gonna have it to use on the units that we have now.
That use it, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna capture all that, so we'll be able to use it on our units we have going forward. If we have problems, we're gonna have problems down there, so.
Let me just say that wisdom of the budget committee's been putting back stuff like this years, if it hadn't, we'd have gone and got bond probably. Commissioner Molder?
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate, just because we get this question all the time, I know I do, I'll do, what keeps? Okay, so this project, this magnitude, what happens to the next project when we say, oh no, we need three bids? So how do you dispute that? You didn't get any other bids on this one.
Oh, the, the way the law is written, we, there's a, there's a program where you didn't have to do that. Oh, the, the, the way the law is written, we, there's a, there's a program where you didn't have to do that. I mean, if, if, it, it's, if you're talking about a, a capital project for a building or something, yes, ma'am, you do. In, in this case, A, you come back cheaper than we thought. And each one of these, I don't want to speak out of turn, you better compete, but, but each one of these had to be engineered different. Like, these are all cook, cook, there aren't cookie cutters. That's the reason it's taking this long to get them. Everyone has to be specially made, part of them to fit. So the engineering fee alone was enough to make you want to just stay with train. But, but uh, you know, we can talk about it because I'm telling you, when we get these done, the, the jail, isn't that right? The jail has a bunch that are end of life. And there's another eight on other buildings that are end of life. Now, these shouldn't, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be as expensive as these. But this is just part of having a lot of buildings and a lot of equipment. It's, it's a fair question. And right now, we don't feel like, A, we, I feel like we got a good deal with the budget committee. It's very satisfied with what we got, but, but if, if you, we don't have time to wait for this. I mean, even now, we're gonna try, we're gonna, if this passes the first time, we're gonna suspend the rules and do this, let's start our production. I know what we, the mess we had with the, with the roof going bad, it's gonna be the same thing if one or two of these units go out. You're gonna have to close a building down.
So that goes back to the last eighteen years since I've served on this committee, this commission. We seen, we are doing a much, much better job having maintenance money to maintain what we have and what we build. But now we're at the last hour on these HVACs and we've got to do something. So I hope the next go around for the budget will do even better with our maintenance fees and funding. Instead of saying, hey, we didn't have a choice. We've got, because that's what I'm hearing. We didn't have a choice. We gotta do something now.
We, we do, but right now, we're at this point, like I said, where Joe and him are hitting reset and hoping it comes back on. They're, they're, they're six to eight years past their, what they thought they'd last. You know, and that's, that's, uh, that's where they're at. And, and I can remember, I was there too. Didn't matter if we wanted, if we were replacing or not, we didn't have the money.
I hate to say it, not like we kicked it down the road because seemed like ever since I got elected mayor, it's been something wrong with building somewhere, was the roof or whatever. But this is not all. We, we're in the middle of the egg building of our, about the windows. That's coming out of our phone that we're putting up and you know, I got to say that we've done a lot. Whoever's the next mayor is, he, he gonna have a head full of hair.
Oh, same, man. Well, you did. I mean, the, the first year I was on the budget committee, we had three million dollars in, in reserves. You think we could afford in one point two for this? I mean, that's all we had.
Okay, I got some, Commissioner Woodard wants to say something?
Yes, I got a question. Uh, if uh, I understand that we're doing this in quite a hurry to, to the need to be done. So I heard you mention that we got some more on tap.
We do.
Okay, so if we are considering doing some more in the future, are we considering opening it up for bids or we're gonna use the engineering component to just go here with the vendor we already using?
What we're in the process of doing, we're gonna have them assessed. And then the, I think we're gonna have the same people assess them. If this commission decides they want to take bids and, and do that, and I, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I, I get why we're doing what we're doing for a couple of reasons. Part of it's timing, part of it is we've got a really good partnership with train and our, our uh, our technicians understand how to work on them. And if we need help, we call them and they come.
Well, I'm understanding that. So if the engineering is done by the vendor, how can you say, I say we're saving money by the vendor doing the engineering component of it? So that's money.
That wasn't what I said. I said they were.
I said, I kinda said that, yeah.
They're gonna assess them.
It's not a cookie cutter deal. It's going in Madam Clerk's office. It's behind uh, Mrs. Slate, back here in the wall. They're gonna have to go in there and get that one out and put one in. It's the same size.
My problem is, I don't have a problem with the vendor that's doing it. I'm just saying, is this the best way to spend our taxpayer money when I'm getting that?
That's a fair question. And, and if you come to budget, and I want, come to budget meeting, give us another idea. I mean, I'm, I'm open. I, I don't mean that to be combative at all. I just, this is where these.
My comment is not to be combative.
No, sir, I didn't think it was, but, but this goes to building grounds and it goes to budget. So, so that's, that's the system we've got. And that was a decision that was made.
So that's what we're gonna do on the next.
I, 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 no, sir, I wouldn't say it's gotta be.
No, I just said what, I'm saying that's what we're planning on doing. It's, it's one of my understanding.
Well, I, well, I understood that we're having them assessed. And, and that's not the same as engineering.
I'm good.
We're uh, we're in the train program. And they met today to show us the savings that we saved from the energy cost by being in that program. I'd, I'd say we could, if we did put out bid, I don't think that anybody's going.
That's the only concern. If, if.
Yeah, I understand, I understand where you're coming from.
Sure.
Sure. Yeah, we gotta be transparent. Yeah. Um, Mr. Hogan?
This isn't, this didn't happen just last Monday night. I've been looking at this for several months, for years coming down the road. And yeah, we kicked that can a little bit, hoping we'd save, we'll give a little more use out of these units. It's time to get off the horse and and feed. And so that's what we're doing.
I wish we had more money to do them all. Because we don't know what the future's gonna hold. Um, Mr. Martin, I had you want to speak?
I just had a question. A significant outlay. Do we now begin to appropriately reserve money? Because these will die at some time. And the right way to do this is to be preserving money for way after sometime when these guys.
Sure, I, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, that's what we, we've tasked the highway department with and solid waste. They put money back every, every year. So at the end, they're gonna have to make a big outlay. It's kind of a, it's, it's a we're just pick what he wants and it doesn't hurt us. And we've done that. And I think it's a good plan. So I think that's something the budget committee could look at and it could be part of it. If we could start a fund, we talked to Jody how to structure it and say, we know this is coming, so we'll prepare for it. It's a great idea.
Prudent way to do this.
Yes, sir, it is.
Commissioner White's on building grounds. And I remember him saying, let's start money back for these projects we know is coming. And the thing is, when you're doing that, you're, we've done it without a tax increase too. And, but if you just want to put more back, we'd probably have to have opinion of a couple of these. Um, who else got a question?
Don't we do a hun, it ended about a hundred thousand dollars a month?
A hundred thousand dollars a month?
Hundred thousand a month, yeah.
Building, you grew on the old courthouse for a million two, that don't go very far.
I'd like to say too, I think Robertson County people ought to be pretty proud because our budget that we have right now, our money that we have, I think we do very well as a county. I think this commission and everybody involved in it, we've done a very good job with the fundings we have to be able to get the schools five million at one time and all this other funding that we've done. I think we've done very well with that. But we ought to be proud of that.
Thank you. Anybody else got a comment? I'll take a motion for the question. Question being called if you follow this resolution, vote yes, against it vote no. Nineteen four zero against that resolution passes. Commissioner Cals?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for this motion only.
I got a motion by Cals. I've got a second by Stubblefield to suspend the rules for this motion only. Question being called. We're voting on suspend the rules. That's all we're voting on. For suspend the rules, vote yes, against it vote no. You don't want to push no? All in favor say aye? Anybody want to say no? He's proud that way. All right, that motion passes. Commissioner Cals, do the second reading on.
All right, this is the same motion. Uh, I guess the same number, zero four two two one, one two five zero three two uh for one point two one seven zero zero nine.
I got a second by Commissioner Hogan. Question being called before this resolution on the second reading. Vote aye, if you're against it vote no. At nineteen four zero against it, resolution passes. Thank you, commissioners. I understand your concerns because we want, do want to be transparent. Mr. Cals?
All right, the one I was looking for, the last one. Zero four two one two five zero three three. This is a, this is a amendment to fund repairs, extra repairs on agriculture building. And this should finish it by understanding, should get it up.
Yes, sir.
Not all of it.
I got a second by Commissioner Head Hebert.
The top floor.
Top floor. Commissioner Aris, you the chairman?
Yes.
You'd like to explain this eighteen thousand dollars. You, the reason I'm asking, you spoke in front of the budget committee, where everybody can hear you.
Well, what it amounts to is we have totally renovated the, the extension office part of that building. Except for the paint and carpet down the main hallway and two offices to the left. Going forward to the main office. And with this, we can complete a total renovation, windows, doors, carpet, tile, paint, restrooms, everything. If the, the entire floor will be completely renovated with this little bit of money.
And it was needed.
Finish the project.
Yes, sir.
My question is, we're gonna wait till after the windows are fixed for water damage?
Well, the windows are fixed, aren't they?
They fixed, they done?
They are.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll work.
And it's asbestos.
Anybody else got, want to call for question or got a comment? Question being called if you follow this resolution, vote aye, if you're against it vote no. I got nineteen four zero against that resolution passes.
We're doing it in. Right, there is, I'd like to suspend, I want to make motion to suspend the rules for this motion only.
Okay, I got a motion to suspend the rules. I got a second by Commissioner Billy Ray Dorsh.
Yes.
We are voting to suspend the rules for second reading. Question being called. All in favor say aye? If I oppose, so move. Mr. Cals?
All right, this is resolution zero four two one two five zero three three, resolution for eighteen thousand dollars. Like the renovation of that cost.
Question.
Question called. We're voting for the second reading of this resolution. All in favor, vote yes, against it vote no. I got nineteen four zero against that resolution passed. Thank you, Commissioner Cals. Again, I guess that's coming out of our money we put back for construction. Chair now recognizes Commissioner Stubblefield. He's got a very important resolution coming up.
Here, Ms. Adam Carter. Hello commissioners and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Um, I, I come to you tonight to bring resolution number zero four two one two five zero three four. This is a resolution recognizing emergency telecommunications as first responders and supporting the state and federal efforts to reclassify emergency telecommunicators as first responders. We've got a second.
I got a second by Commissioner Tommy Jackson.
Uh, I will tell you that we're one of the first few counties in the state of Tennessee. We're not the first, but one of the first in group to recognize our, our dispatchers as first responders. Uh, they, they are the first responders to our first responders. And they carry the same kind of load that, that our first responders carry. They have to deal with um, the tragedies and, and talk to the people and carry home the same kind of, of uh, terror and, and horror that our first responders do. And I think this is a great thing. It's time for us to recognize them as first responders. They've always been recognized as clerical and clerks. And so I think it's time that we, we promoted them to what they are, first responders.
It's called the nine one one says that. Okay, I got, let's see, Mr. Roberts speak?
I just had a question first. I think this is a great thing to do, um, to recognize them in this way. Uh, is there anything uh, practical that this designation uh allows as far as maybe grant resources or other resources uh for my function that otherwise would be available?
When it is approved by the state of Tennessee and there is legislation now, and in the legislature to uh, to recognize the dispatchers as first responders, uh, they will get an increase in their retirement benefits. Other than that, I, I am not aware of any other benefits other than just being recognized as who they are.
And there's no impact on the county for that benefit?
No.
Not as we speak right now?
As we speak now.
The house, the state may pass something.
Yeah, at, at a later date, but right now there's not. And there's not anything right now that will affect it other than just being recognized.
Thank you.
Tough job. Anybody else would like to speak or comment? Question being called for this resolution, vote yes, against it vote no. Nineteen four, none against that resolution passes. Thank you. Is any old business coming for the commission? Any new business? Commissioner White?
So last month I was trying to get our fair sheriff to get up here and give us some uh, numbers of what we're trying to do, what they've been doing as far as uh, the sheriff department. And so uh, he didn't have some things ready for last month, but I believe he got some this month. I'd like to make him a member of the court to uh, kind of come up and tell what he's been doing and his men and ladies have been doing for the county. Robert, you got it?
So I got a motion and a second. All in favor of making the sheriff part of this county commission on new business? Say aye?
Aye.
Anybody say no? I think the aye sheriff, sheriff, you got a lot of power, but the ayes has got it.
Ayes has got it. Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, I always wanted to say that. Good evening. Um, first I'd like to say I appreciate y'all taking care of the air conditioning situation here in this building. If you've ever had to manage hot, irritable people that are armed, you'd appreciate it too. So thank y'all very much for that. Shared some things with the law enforcement jail workhouse committee and uh, as Commissioner White said, they asked me to come and kind of share some, some news with you, some of our facts and stats. Um, one thing I'd like to talk about first and I'll be brief, uh, situation in Ridgestop. Uh, been down there twice this year to meet with the leadership there. Uh, and talk about what the sheriff's office has been able to do for them. Uh, back in twenty eighteen, they had their own police department. I think if you remember, they had six full-time officers assigned to Ridgestop at the time. And currently they help the county fund two full-time positions down there. But uh, what I shared with them is since twenty eighteen, uh, comparing when they had their police department to when we took over this past year, twenty twenty-four, sorry, we've been doing it for about five years, but our numbers for twenty twenty-four, uh, arrests, we've increased by fifty-five percent over the numbers they had before. Community policing has gone up sixteen thousand three hundred percent compared to what they had when they had their own police department. Traffic crashes, they had fifty-four in twenty eighteen. We had fifty-one in twenty twenty-four. It's a five point five percent decrease. Many people don't know what the traffic volume is in Ridgestop, but it's about thirty-seven thousand cars per day. Uh, to have one accident, less than one accident per week on the average, that's, those are some pretty outstanding numbers, I think. Calls for service, we have decreased calls for service by forty-three percent. And then the clearance rate, this is our solvability of crimes that do get reported, went from seventy-eight percent to ninety-four percent for the city of Ridgestop. It's a sixteen percent increase. State average is about thirty-five point six percent on clearing crimes. Case y'all hear any talk, because there's been some talk the last couple of months from Ridgestop. Uh, that's what we shared with them. I think it's been a good partnership. I think they're getting a lot of bang for their buck. Uh, that's why they continue with us again this year uh, with an MOU, so. Looking at the whole county from sheriff's office, uh, I like to do things compared to twenty ten. Uh, it's a good census year, but it's also the year we saw a lot of change at the sheriff's office. That's the year I would become chief deputy under Sheriff Bill Holt at the time. And um, a lot of, a lot of administrative changes, management philosophies and things uh, come about twenty ten to present day, so. Many of you are probably aware of the population of the county then was sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three people. Has it grown any, you think? Quite a bit. It's up twenty-one percent over eighty thousand people this, this past year. Uh, you would expect most of your crimes to go with population as people move in here. Those numbers would stay kind of consistent. Our clearance rate for twenty ten was twenty-one point two five percent, solvability of crimes, things we're able to get done. Twenty twenty-four, we brought that up to eighty-six point zero eight percent. That's a sixty-five percent increase. Very proud of our team. Uh, property crimes, twenty ten to twenty twenty-four, anybody want to take a guess what they decrease? We had a decrease, which is a good thing. Percentage wise.
Forty five percent.
Forty five, that'd be a great number. Law enforcement, you, you're hoping to stay steady or increase with your population, right? We did very well. Seventy one percent decrease in property crimes. Seventy one percent decrease in property crimes. Total offenses did go up by five percent. And I'll explain why they went up five percent. How do you have a seventy one percent decrease in property crimes and you still have offenses that go up a little bit? This is why, because we have a proactive sheriff's office. We're out stopping cars, we're making cases. The things that you're proactive on are DUIs. Twenty ten, the county had forty two for the sheriff's office. Twenty twenty four, we hit a hundred and thirty two. Public intoxication, twenty five in twenty ten, we hit forty two last year. Drug enforcement activities, that's proactive activity. Out there searching for drugs, you're out there doing search warrants. In twenty ten, there were sixty five cases. Twenty twenty four, there were three hundred and forty nine cases. We have a highly trained proactive team when it comes to drug enforcement. Drug equipment violations was twenty in twenty ten, uh, twenty four, a hundred and fifty five. They've been doing really well. Extremely proud of them. I can't take credit for it. I got good people, a good team, so. I appreciate the partnership y'all have had with us to help attract quality deputies to the pain now. And I hope to continue that partnership as we move forward to the future. Because that's what makes it. If you don't have good people provide good service, you're not going to get service. Uh, that's what, what it's all about. Commissioner White wanted me to share a story too, uh, that we were, we were talking about last couple of months. We had some little group that came up out of Nashville and did some break-ins of some cars and stole some things out of it. We was able to make some arrests and, and one of the boys had just turned eighteen. And he got brought upstairs the next morning for some questioning with the detectives. He's wearing his orange jumpsuit and got his shackles on and his handcuffs, belly chain. He gets marched up through there, uh, sits down in the interview room. And, uh, take the, just looked at him and said, you do realize you're eighteen? And you're not in Nashville? And boy looked at him and said, sir, I'm very well aware of that now that I'm in Robertson County. That's, that's the type of image we want. Uh, is that we're tough on crime here. We're not going to put up with those types of things. You come here, you, you make victims of our citizens. We're going to come, come get you. And you're going, you're going to stand justice for that, go before court, so. That's one reason I think we have the lowest crime rate in surrounding counties. Uh, and one of the lowest in the state of Tennessee, so. To tell you one other good piece of news, I got a, a text message from, uh, Savannah Puckett, if y'all remember, was my deputy that was murdered from her mother today. And she's been working hard with the state legislature to get Savannah's law passed where there will be a domestic violence registry. If you are a habitual offender of domestic violence, your picture will be out there, your name will be out there so that women and men can look and see and have access to, though, even as a deputy, she had no access to that information without violating the law herself to run a criminal history on somebody she was looking at dating. So this, this will make that public and hopefully people can protect themselves from habitual abusers. So, uh, it passed the senate and the house and it's on the way to the governor's desk for signature. He put it in his budget, so I'm sure he's, he's awaiting to sign that very quickly, so. I congratulate her mother on, on keeping her daughter's memory alive and then pushing hard the last two years to get that legislation passed. We've had a registry for animal abusers uh, in the state of Tennessee, and that is one thing I've been talking about. And if we can do that for animals, we sure can do it for people. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Sheriff. He might get a question, Sheriff.
How many job vacancies do you have in your?
Uh, as of today, I have nine. So we're doing very well on that.
Retention going well?
Fairly well. Um, as y'all know, we have very demanding jobs. It doesn't fit everyone. It's highly stressful. And then we have very high standards and I have terminated my fair share this year, uh, unfortunately. Um, you have opportunities to learn and grow. There's certain things I'm not going to tolerate and, and you will be terminated for them. And if you refuse to grow and change your ways, then you're going to be terminated too. We just can't have the liability and take away from what type of results we're having as a sheriff's office, so. I guess we're, we're doing much better than thirty six openings a couple of years ago we were, we were trying to address, so thank y'all for that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Very much. Thank you, man. Thank you.
We know.
Mr. Strab, you going to say something?
Man, I've shut my thing off and everything.
Jeff, will you leave his thing alone? It's no field.
I'd just like to ask you, you know, back several years ago, y'all started a program with like the farmers, uh, using the chemicals. Uh, how's that program work? Is it?
We got over a hundred and thirty signed up for the Farm Watch program. Uh, Farm Watch is one of those programs that, uh, a lot of people are glad that you have it. They just don't participate in it. But that also says like our neighborhood watch, we don't have any active neighborhood watching now. People are like, well, that's not a good thing. Actually, it's a great thing because when do you start a neighborhood watch? Things are bad in your neighborhood, right? So if people aren't wanting to do those things, they mean they feel pretty safe in their neighborhoods, so.
Have you, uh, recovered any equipment due to the, uh?
We have. We had some chainsaws that were stolen and, and pawned up in Kentucky and we're able to, to link them back to the owner based on that smart water system, so. A lot of it's education. Everyone gets booked into jail. They're, they're taught about smart water and that this county uses it on their, their property and criminals just like anybody else. They like to talk, you know, I go over to Chigum County or down to Nashville, steal something. Job's right here. I work with them, but my job right here.
Sheriff, would you just give an overview on the LPRs and where you are on that?
Yeah, so, uh, the LPRs have been ordered. We are in the, uh, process of getting the permitting from T dot, all those. Um, one is already scheduled because it's going on Kenny's Road, which is a county road. We'll need a permit from T dot on that, so. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm guessing probably in the next couple of months, we'll get the permits back and they'll start installations on the other locations throughout the county. I think Springfield's already got two of theirs up. I know.
Greenway, I know.
Yeah, where you driving them, man? Uh, I know one of them, I think, South Main near four thirty one, if I believe. I heard right, and I'm trying to think where the other one is. They're, they're looking to get about six of them, I believe, eventually.
Now, is that all automated?
It is.
When you get something that notifies somebody, hopefully fast, to act on this?
So they can upload a hot list in there, like stolen cars. And when you upload it in the database that that vehicle drives by, it alerts and then sends those alerts to, to the local agency that you just had a stolen vehicle come through or silver alerts, amber alerts, uh, anything like that.
Hey, that's very much needed in this county.
They don't keep that data, I think thirty days. I might be wrong, maybe ninety, but I'm thinking thirty days. Uh, if you hadn't initiated some type of criminal act or criminal investigation to, to retain that data for, it just, it's gone, it's wiped.
But I've asked the EMA, chanced them to ask the budget committee for a drone that's next to budget. They're constantly having to go out at night, do river check, rescues. If it's all timers or maybe a young child out walking, this drone can do the work of fifty people.
And we have, uh, have an aviation unit at the sheriff's office and we've gone through all the licensing and the FFA and, or FDA. I wasn't going to say FFA. I'm a farmer, I can't help it, right? Part-time farmer, not a real farmer. Real farmer has to provide all their income through their farm. Um, but yeah, the, uh, we got our licenses. We added one more unit and we have, uh, three, we're going to end up having six operators that are licensed. Uh, they're going through that right now. Um, and like the mayor said, that is a huge resource and it's a cheap resource. I think we're paying maybe four or five thousand dollars for a drone now that has FLIR capability, night vision, all that, and we use them.
Yeah, that's very vague.
Use it a lot more than I ever thought we would. People out in cornfields that are lost, uh, Alzheimer's, um, small children that wander off, uh, name it, we've used it for it. If we've used it on man hunts, we've used on man, it's hard to detect people when they're hiding underneath the ground, uh, but, uh, with the FLIR, but uh, we've used it on several man hunts. Uh, we use it as a reconnaissance when we're doing high, high-risk transports to courts.
What do you K nine's you got now?
Two.
Two.
Yeah, both are drug and track dogs. I don't have any bite dogs.
You ain't got none to bite?
None to bite. I can find you one that bite.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Thanks a lot.
We thank y'all, watch y'all do.
All right, anybody got something else, new business? Seeing none. Commissioner Hogan, would you like to do our notary?
Mr. Mayor, I have reviewed and signed the application of those wishing to become a notary. I recommend that we elect all those that have applied to be a notary for the county of Robertson and the great state of Tennessee.
I got a second by Billy Ray Dars. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody against that? No, it's not, so it passes. Got one more motion to be made.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion to adjourn, so moved.